And if you're speaking to the Board of Commissioners, please remember to turn your microphone on. The mics are on when there's little red circle up at the top. If you want to speak to before the Board of Commissioners today. I don't see anyone in the room, but there is a sign up at the back of the table. If you're online, please put your name in the chat if you would like to speak today. For our public comment period. And that's about it for reminders. Next items to review and approve the agenda. We do have one change. We will be adding an executive session today. And that will take place after the regular business. And because the public hearing must take place at 11 certain or as close there to as possible. It's likely that that executive session will take place before the public hearing this morning. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. Then with that, we will consider the agenda approved and move on to our proclamation this morning. Although I'm not sure. Oh, Eric, your timing is perfect. We're ready for you. Come on up, there's a copy on the table. This morning's proclamation is about National Suicide Prevention Month in Benton County. Proclamation 2024 dash zero one seven. And Eric Bowling from Health Services will be the presenter. Good morning. And please turn the mic on.
Good morning. In the matter proclaiming September 2024 is National Suicide Prevention Month in Benton County. Proclamation P two 2024 dash zero one seven. Month of September 2024 is National Suicide Prevention Month. When millions of people around the world join their voices to share a message of hope and healing. And suicide is a and healing and suicide is a devastating tragedy that leaves loved ones with unanswered questions wishing for more time together. While anyone can be impacted by suicide, recognize that some populations experience more negative social conditions. And higher rates of suicide or suicide attempts. This includes veterans, people who live in rural areas, sexual and gender minorities, middle aged adults, people of color and tribal populations. And with the national theme changing the narrative on suicide. Benton County's observance draws attention to this important public health issue and to disseminate the message that suicide is preventable. Benton County or Desa residents play a role in suicide prevention, promoting wellness and raising awareness about the importance of changing the narrative around surrounding suicide and transforming how we perceive this complex issue. Suicide and suicide behaviors can be influenced by negative conditions in which people. Live, learn, work and play. The benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health challenges, suicide attempts and loss are significant and valuable. Individuals, families and our community at large, who must encourage relatives, friends, neighbors, coworkers and providers to recognize the signs of a problem. And guide those in need to appropriate services, supports. And every day in Benton County, people engage in behavioral health services and community support. Suicide Prevention Month provides the opportunity for millions of community members in our nation to raise awareness, build resiliency and find help. Now therefore, the Benton County Commissioners proclaim the month of September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month. Adopted this third day of September 2024. Sign this third day of September 2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move to proclaim September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Month in Benton County. That's proclamation P 2024 days zero one seven.
Second. All in favor, please indicate with an eye. 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 Thank you. And Commissioner Malone reminded me that we had not done introductions this morning. I'm Zan Ojero, Board Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Vance Corney County Council.
Rachel McInney County Administrator.
And in the room.
Jesse on interim main director.
Oh, Walsinger Facilities.
Ryan Vogt, Executive Director of Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments.
Hi, I'm Paul, Chief and Health Department Director. And that was Eric Bowling, our crisis medical health program manager, who has a lot of work to get to.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder. And online.
Jeff and Arsenal, Benton County Sheriff.
Good morning, Sheriff. Okay. Well, with that, we will move on further into our agenda. And I do not believe we have any comments from the public this morning. Erica, is there anyone online that's indicated in interest? Okay. So we'll move directly into our work session. And the first item is an update from Ryan Vogt from Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. Morning, Ryan.
Red means on.
Red means on.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me again. In your packet is last year's annual report, which was accidentally sent over because you've already seen it. So just a reminder of the great things we're doing apparently. I did have a couple of things I wanted to cover with you today. First, taking it slightly out of sequence. It's a it's. Thank you for your last item and adopting that proclamation. As you know, Council of Governments on your behalf delivers the Veteran Services Programs here in Benton County. And I think suicide happens at a much higher prevalence in the veteran community than it does the community at large. And so coupled together, that's a pretty strong motion on your behalf. So thank you for that. Transitioning into a conversation similarly closely aligned is on September 12th. Is our annual Lynn Benton Veterans Stand Down Event. And I believe you already have flyers over to you. We will make sure that if you don't, or if you need more, that we get them to you. This is a really great resource fair for veterans to go and get connected to services and also get connected to. Some items if they are needing some safety and security items for them. Because they're experiencing housing instability at the time. But it gives them connected to any number of resources available, both in the Lynn and Benton communities to help with any variety of things. So again, that is September 12th from 10 to 2:00. And it is at the Lynn County Fairgrounds. Okay. Now on with my regularly scheduled program. So the last time I was here, I was able to give you all an update about some happenings going on related to the ongoing partnership between our sister agency, Community Services Consortium and our agency, the Council of Governments. I know that several of you are in tune with that conversation. Quite frankly, probably more so than I am. But if that has not been shared here, I wanted to let people know that this is a conversation that's been going on upwards of 20 years perhaps. Related to how the Council of Governments and Community Services Consortium, serving many of the same vulnerable consumers within the Lynn Benton and Lincoln region. Have crossover populations and yet we operate as two separate entities. Making it additionally challenging for those consumers that intersect with both organizations. There has been a longstanding conversation about how we might be able to partner better. And I would say that over the last four years, we've put some real practical application into some administrative efficiencies, some dual contracting, and now even some cohousing here in the Corvallis Office. And with that success, I believe members of both boards have endorsed continuing to move forward. With strengthening that partnership and formalizing that in a different way. And so at this point, both boards are adopting a recommendation to move forward with a single executive director over both agencies. Now, when that happens, what that looks like is still being, it's still part of the conversation. But I do think that over the course of the next four to six months, we'll see quite a bit of movement around what that might look like or how that those positions might get filled. But I think the vision around that continues to be sound. And that is our consumer should have as many barriers removed as possible. And if we can also find administrative efficiencies, that's money that goes back to our consumers and goes back into the community. And and we have demonstrated over the last couple of years that. It that it can work with the right vision and with the right energy and with the right direction. It can work and it's working very well, I think. So more to come on that front as that unfolds, but wanted to make sure you all knew that that's that's the current direction. All right. If you were not aware, the Oregon Department of Human Services is also one of our partners that intersects with a lot of the same consumers that we have. The partnership is, I would say, it's really strong, but it is not quite as intentional right now as the conversation between the COG and the Community Services Consortium. Earlier this this last month, the Department of Human Services Director Fairbors Paxurek came out and met with Department of Human Services Offices. Also with partner agencies, including ourselves, to talk about how we might be able to serve consumers better. Now, for those of you who know me, you know that I had about 20 years with Department of Human Services on a prior life before I came here. And I knew Fairbors and I had a moment to sit around and chat about the fact that we've known each other since 2001. And it it is refreshing to see the upper leadership of the Department of Human Services going out into the community to really take a look at how the policy influence of what they've done. At the mothership there in Salem is actually playing out in the field. I also believe there was some intentionality with Fairbors coming out to this this Lynn and Benton area. And that is because there is such a strong partnership right now. And we are showing ways that, you know, our AAA office is a it's a unique conversation. It doesn't happen that way all over the state. And so being able to have the state offices intersecting very well with the senior delivery network is pretty exciting. And so there is more to be had there. But one of the other things that Fairbors and his team did when they were here was they spent some time with Allison Hobgood. And the daytime drop in center. And I know that's an area that has been of real interest to the Commissioners. And hopefully you'll get a little bit of time with Director Hobgood to talk about what that visit meant for her. But I know the feedback that I got from Fairbors and his team was that that was pretty moving for them to see the incredible work that's happening there. So. You might want to know that. And then finally, we're good to crack open what's left of the Wayback Machine. And that is, you'll remember that the Council of Governments at one point in time was asked to take a leadership role in coordinating the broadband study. That take a look took a look at insufficient broadband mapping across the three county area. Now I've had this brought details about how that has unfolded before the Commissioners over the last two years. And we are at a place where the COG's insertion into that is now stepping back. And individual task forces are continuing the work to prioritize projects, to seek for grants. To partner with internet services providers to get service out to unserved and underserved areas. We are at a place where the consultant that did the mapping work is still kind of hanging in there. They've got a couple of months left on their contract. And the question I wanted to ask for the Commissioners, since the COG will be stepping out, is would you like some constituent population of your staff to meet with consultants for one last handoff? Otherwise, I believe the work is still continuing at the grant level. You'll forgive me because can't remember the name of the provider anymore. It used to be Sequoia and they've changed their name recently.
Rural Prosperity Partners.
Rural Prosperity, great, thank you.
We have a discussion with our IT Director scheduled for next Tuesday at our goal setting meeting. When we'll be discussing this a little bit further. So thank you for raising the question. We know we're at an inflection point when it comes to the broadband grant funding. And I'm very eager to hear an update about what kinds of. Projects might be emerging in our geography.
Thank you, Committee. Yeah, Rural Prosperity has really emerged as kind of a leader across the state in the broadband space. And so I think you're in good hands there. If you have a desire for any kind of close out meeting with us or a warm handoff of some sort, just let me know and I'll get you in contact with our planner that ran that.
Thank you.
I guess I would be inclined to increase the warm handoff. We get occasional reports and then about what's going on in the broadband effort. It's it's a little amorphous for me. And I think any kind of continuity would would be a good thing.
I think Adam will help. And I know also that there is a survey out from Rural Prosperity Partners, asking us what we would like that relationship to look like moving forward. It's just a two question survey. But I'm hoping we can discuss that next Tuesday with Adam Lortz. And and then we can have a better sense moving forward.
Commissioners, if it's all right with you, then I'll just go ahead and connect you to Justin. And you all can choose what's the right cadence and what's the right insertion point.
Thank you.
Of course. And it's always good for me to leave two or three minutes in case you have any questions for me. So I'm not no more topics for me today.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. I did want to mention that it looked like the Community Services Consortium had a great one day event this last month. An all staff meeting. And I know you were there and much of the COG leadership was there as well. So it was another sign of that ever closer working relationship between the two organizations.
Appreciate the update. I think you neglected to mention the annual picnic, staff picnic last week, last week in Fulham with them. I think that's a nice venue and a great event. And it seemed like people were having a good time and. And a chance to do casual conversations outside the office and potentially make new. New connections, new best friends. And so. Appreciate getting invited to that. And I rarely turn down a free lunch, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, it was fantastic to have you there. It was a little bit of a cooler day and so we decided to bypass the water games this time. But it was fantastic having you there and it was great. Yeah, I think we had about 85 staff show up and it's it's always great to break bread with the amazing people who are delivering these services every day.
Ryan, it's Rachel. Hi. Could you just go into a little detail of some of the grants that the COG is working towards and working with some of our local city manager, you know, city? The work you're doing there, I think it's it's interesting. A lot of it's surrounded by EV chargers and transportation.
Absolutely, thank you. So one of the things that the Commissioners will remember is that. I got the joy of stretching some of my brain muscles by being the Community and Economic Development Director for just over a year while we were hiring the right person. And it was worth it and we definitely hired the right person. So during that period of time, I had the opportunity to really dig in on what I was hearing as community needs where the COG had been insufficiently applying. Services for the communities that we serve. And one of the things that kept ringing over and over again was that many of the member agencies that we serve don't have really capacity for a lot of the things like chasing infrastructure grants right now. And even outside of this giant tidal wave of infrastructure money coming in. Many of our member agencies just don't have the capacity for regular grants. Nonetheless, try to figure out how they're going to come up with match funds and things of that nature. So I put it upon myself to really take a charge around developing a grant writing program. Now luckily I was able to kind of create the vision and hand it off right as Jacqueline Disney was coming on board. And the very first person that we hired has just been an incredible insertion so far. She hit the ground running. She's 100 miles an hour. She's a lot of fun to talk to. After an hour, you're exhausted because you're just like, wow, that was a lot. That was a whole lot that just happened there. And that's and I that's exactly what we need right now is somebody who is just really energized about looking for grant opportunities, making connections for communities. One of the things that she did right out of the gates and it's only she's only been here a couple of months now is that she chased a couple of safe streets for all grants through the for the community. So we put one together for Lincoln County. And then put one together for the Valley, Lynn and pieces of Benton out to Fulham. And put those in. We have not heard back. Those would both be large scale studies to figure out what's going on with our traffic patterns. It's a way for us to prioritize those places where fatalities are taking place and try to find new traction. And it is outside of the existing streams that we have through Department of Transportation, our Corvallis Area MPO and our Area Commission on Transportation that we run. Where we might be able to get additional funds in for some of those high priority projects to create additional safety that otherwise don't make it into the Department of Transportation pipeline because of their kind of limited resources. We were only able to submit one. Yeah, agencies are only allowed to submit one. So we submitted, we officially are on the record as submitting the one for Lincoln County. And the City of Tangent was willing to take the leadership role in being the owner for the one for the valley. But Susan's already done some other stuff. She was able to find a last minute grant that for the city of Sweet Home, who needed some generators and had about two days left on this grant opportunity. Where they're trying to get some generators to be able to pump water if they lose power. And they're looking at a number of other things that are out there. She's been going around to all of the communities and establishing a needs list. And with those, she's trying to bundle projects as they come forward. So there's going to be some kind of one offs that hit more than one community, I think. And I'll have more to share probably the next quarter that I come out. Rachel, was there a specific one you wanted me to address? Okay.
No, I just like to see the cooperation in our monthly meetings that we're all really sitting around at a table. And really looking at what we can do together, you know, to connect Fulham with Albany to Monroe beyond Benton County. A great platform. And yes, I agree, her energy is amazing.
Yeah, yeah, she's definitely a fantastic addition.
And and this is Susan Peterson, correct? Has the COG had a grant writer on staff previously?
Commissioner, not as a dedicated role. We obviously we receive a lot of our funding through grants, particularly in our community services programs or our older American acts programs and our Meals on Wheels and things of that nature where you're familiar. Both do, we do asks of member agencies that I know you're familiar. Both do, we do asks of member agencies that I know you're familiar with. And we also do some, some smaller grants. It's a lot of work for very small grants usually. But we haven't had a dedicated resource like this, certainly not during my tenure. It's really more committed to writing and administering grants on behalf of member agencies. So she's not dedicated to bringing money in for us. She's dedicated to bringing money in for you.
Thank you.
That's great. I know it's been a discussion off and on whether or not we can afford that capacity. And I think that it's a wonderful service, especially for our smaller municipalities. I did want to mention that we do already know here in, at Benton County that we received the Safe Streets for All funding, as did Corvallis. So there will be planning efforts going on using, I think DK Consulting, who did the transportation systems plans for both jurisdictions to work with them again on the Safe Streets for All. So if that funding does come through for that valley stretch, we should definitely be integrating and coordinating.
Yeah, fantastic.
And I was happy to see that, that you received a grant that will purchase an electric bike lane sweeper for the city of Corvallis, because one of my pet peeves as an occasional bicycle commuter these days is that when the street sweeper goes through, all it does is sweep all the crud into the bike lane. So.
Yeah, it's super, you know, that's one of those projects that you don't realize how impactful it is until you hit kind of the right nerve. And I know our transportation program manager, Nick Melsner, was very excited about bringing that one across the finish line. And he has moved on to new things, but he was pretty excited about that being one of the final feathers in his cap.
That's great. Any other questions for Ryan? Okay. Well, we appreciate the update and always welcome you here to let us know what's going on. We don't always hear about the, the programs themselves, individual programs. And it's always a good thing to hear, especially about the collaborations that are going on, either with our health departments or with other parts of the county and always wanting to work smarter so that we can serve all those folks out there in the community.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next up, we have Benton County Fair report from Jesse Ott and Jennifer Martin.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. And thank you for having us this morning. So we're just going to give kind of a rundown of how the fair went and, and go kind of day by day. And, and so we're coming up, Jennifer's six months with Benton County is rapidly approaching. And so I'm just really impressed. It was really stepped in and just really stepped up. And so we've got a pretty new team over at the fairgrounds. We've got some longtime staff, but in the office, we had some retirements. So we had a really new team. And so I just want to call out, you know, that staff over there with Leanna and Carrie and Mindy and Doug and Scott. They did such a good job. And so it was really great to see some of our longtime folks really meld with the new staff. It's a real bonding experience when you put on the fair. So I'm just happy to see everybody did so well and Jennifer really stepped up to the challenge. So. So to start in general, it was just an overall successful fair. We were up in open class exhibits. We were, did a fantastic auction and overall numbers are up. So we're, we're doing well. You know, we have a lot of improvements, I think, you know, even before the fair is over, we start listing those things we want to change for next year. But so we'll give a little rundown here for Wednesday. So this was the big change that we worked with Jeremy and the team last year to talk about changing Wednesdays to a more family oriented day. We've had musical acts in the past and sometimes it was kind of hit or miss. And so we, we made the change this year and got some great acts. And so, you know, we had comedians and magicians and ventriloquists. And so it's on the day families get in for free anyway. And so it worked out really well. We were really pleased. We had a lot of people, you know, when you looked out in front of the stage, it was just a lot of kids with blankets and families set up. And Wednesday was, Wednesday was really fun. So, and actually we're, we started talking with Corvallis Parks and Rec for our annual Benton County Outdoor Adventures, which happens usually a week or two weeks before the county fair, about the possibility of having some kind of camp during fair, if there was a need for folks looking. And so, but that went really well and I think we'll continue it next year. Jen, would you want to give a rundown of senior day there? Senior day was interesting for us. It was, it was the hottest day of the fair, so.
Yeah, so it was almost 100 degrees that day. So we were down about 20% from last year. But once it started to cool off, it, we started to see those crowds coming in. It was the first night of our MPRA sanctioned rodeo, which if you guys were there, the stands were full and people were standing around looking for seats the whole time. That night or that day was our senior day. We had about 100 people show up for our ice cream social and bingo. That was sponsored by Bonaventure and Well Care. They sponsored the ice cream and did all the prizes for bingo. And I got a lot of fun comments about the prizes that they got were pretty, pretty nice. Last year we only had a few and this year we had much more because they sponsor them all. We also had Jessica James and Kurt Vaymeyer, who were our main stage acts that night. You know, it wasn't huge. I think we see where there needs to be some changes made for Thursday night for next year, making it more a local event where we're trying to get, you know, maybe a talent show going or something like that, so we can get more locals to come in. I think if it was cooler, it would have been a little busier that night, but it just really, we suffered a little bit. But once it cooled off, we started to see all those people coming in and we ended up staying open a little later to make sure everyone got to ride their rides and get their popcorn or whatever they were getting that day.
Yeah. And I failed to mention on Wednesday night was also the beginning of our all girls rodeo, which was another huge success, standing room only once again. So rodeos continue to be very popular for folks. Okay. Yeah. And then, and we've been talking. So we'll be talking with the fair board about maybe making some changes on Thursday. It's kind of third year in a row that we've had some really great musical acts and not a whole lot of people out there on Thursday night. That's also the night of River Rhythms on Thursday. So we've got competition coming up the next day, the jamboree starts. So we've, we've typically done really well on Thursday and Fri- or Friday and Saturday. So we've been thinking about maybe making it a little more of a local thing on Thursday or having more cultural showcases, that type of thing. To try to, you know, to kind of bring in a different crowd, see who we can get out there. And, you know, even if it was kind of a battle of the bands or some kind of local showcase, that might be helpful. So. And Friday night, Friday night was great. That was our rock night, always very popular. The stage area was packed. We, we did really well on revenue for tickets and parking. And one of the successes we had this year is that we contracted out a lot of the ticketing. And some of that was a necessity due to some of our larger service organizations not being able to support in that role anymore. And it kind of got to the point where we checked around and we just weren't really sure if we'd be able to source enough people. It takes so many. But I think we can safely say from our partners and friends and finance that it went really well. They were thrilled because we weren't all just sitting counting money in the middle of the night and, and trying to deal with that kind of tracking. We had a really trusted partner that could send in reports that we could query. So it was really great to keep track of the funds that way and really reduce the burden on a lot of the other county departments, including IT, finance. You know, and on that note, I just got to say thanks again to every department that helped. It was just across the board from HR to IT to Public Works. You know, finance was there, environmental health. You know, we all chipped in. The health department was a big, big help. And so our, you know, it's not just the Napier, you know, this is the whole county puts this on. So Friday night was a big success and folks really loved that. We had some great rock bands out there and you'll see some pictures of our amazing rodeo queen, Naomi Bailey. So she just did an absolutely great job for us this year and really helped push the advertising, which was also another huge success. So our PIO department there with Genevieve and Cory did such a great job. And this was kind of the first year we really put together, integrated our PIO's advertising connections and all the different streams with our county, county fair advertising. And it worked really well. So I think we'll just continue that and refine it in the future. We've actually spent less than other county fairs that we've had in the past on advertising and had a much broader reach. You know, some of the numbers come close to 330,000 folks that were reached by our advertising. So very impressive. Lots of thank you to Cory and Genevieve. Then on Saturday night, we had our big country night. And so with Boomtown Saints and Sawyer Brown and the rodeo, or sorry, the rodeo was Friday. The auction, yeah, the big auction. So the 4H livestock auction, we had moved to a Saturday afternoon and that was kind of a big deal. It was, we weren't really sure if, if the folks would come out for that and whether or not the time change would work for them. But the auction dinner went well, the 4H dinner went really well. And the change in the auction time with another revenue of over a million dollars. So again, the, the largest single day fundraiser in Benton County was another success. And it seemed like most of the folks at the auctions really appreciated that time change. A lot of those folks, it would be pretty late into the night when some of the last sheep would be auctioned off. And that would make some pretty long night for folks. So. And there we've just got some photos from our all girls rodeo and, and the rodeos and just, just how meaningful those events are. We've gotten a lot of feedback. And so on the feedback, Jennifer is going to mention our feedback and social media poll that we just put out to get some, some more feedback from folks. So would you be able to dive into that a little bit?
Yeah. So Cory and Genevieve, they decided to do a survey this year after fair to kind of gather comments and see what people liked, what they wanted to see a little different. We had lots of amazing comments about the rodeo, the rides, people wanting more food. Always want more food. And then, you know, the, we had some walking acts. We've never gotten so many positive comments about our walking acts and how talented they were. And it was good to hear these and then see them on paper that it wasn't just us getting these comments. It's the counties getting them. And so hopefully we'll be able to add some of those ones from this year into next year and then add some new ones as well. They did exhibit, or polls for the animals and art exhibits, carnival rides, concerts, fair food, rodeos and lots of votes. Most people loved the animals and the art exhibits. That was where we got the most votes and then next would have been the rodeo. So lots of great numbers there. And then the concerts were third.
Yeah. It was a really good feedback. So we did get a lot of inspirational feedback about the all girls rodeo and some of that, you know, for, for a lot of these young people, that, that was a really inspirational event. And so this, this survey went out on Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor, Twitter. And so we did get, you know, we did get some concerning feedback a little bit about just making sure our surfacing. You know, and that's something that we're aware of. And so we really, we got a couple of people that, you know, are trying to get around and it's just getting more challenging out there. So that's something we're going to have to work on. But all in all, are some really great feedback that people really enjoyed the fair. Some suggestions to add a Sunday. I don't know that we could handle that. But people, people enjoyed it. So really great stuff there. And then the 4Hers, you know, they put on so much work, their families. I was amazed this year at the weeks prior, the weeks after, they're still there working on cleaning up, getting everything together. I mean, this is a big deal and it's, it's a big deal for a lot of these families. And it's, it's not easy to do this either for, for a lot of these folks, you know, it's, it takes, you know, a lot of family coordination to be able to haul these animals around and keep them fed and take care of them, put in all the hard work that they do. So we were just so thrilled and impressed with our 4Hers. And some more of all the different goat shows, dog shows. You know, and they go into everything from presentations to research projects, you name it. So and there's Naomi riding at our fair for the National Anthem at the rodeo. And so all in all, we were really thrilled, you know, there's a few changes we would like to make. But, you know, especially considering we were such a new team kind of coming together. Just really happy with it. And so our staff last week, so the Oregon Fairs Association has an annual meeting up at the state fair. And it's a good chance for fair directors, they, they get in for free and then all the fair directors have a meeting and fair staff. And then you get a chance to kind of go out to the fair and see how they do things. See if we can maybe get some of their vendors and that type of thing, make connections. And, and so they learned a lot. So it was really great for the staff. A lot of these folks, this was their first time ever putting on a fair like this. So, you know, they, they got a chance to go up there and meet with folks and find out. We had a few things. There was, we weren't thrilled with how empty the commercial building was. We had a bunch of people that couldn't make it. And going to the state fair, the staff found out that that was pretty common at a lot of the fairs around here. Even the state fair kind of asked the spa vendors to just fill out a huge space so that, you know, they can, they can fill it up. So that gives us some thinking to do about what to do with that space. I think kind of the world of sales is changing, you know, there's not so many people out there selling you the latest and greatest knife and, and wash rag and all that kind of stuff. And so, you know, maybe we can find a way to make it even more meaningful, you know, without producing too much more cost onto the fair. So that was some of the feedback we learned and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I had a couple, you mentioned changes for next year. Oh, could you give a couple examples of what you're thinking?
Well, so a few things. So we knew that Wednesday worked out really well. So we want to expand upon Family Day and, you know, incorporate the schools a little more. So our open class has a coloring contest in the open class. We would love to include the school district and we got that working before the end of the year last year. But, you know, now we have more time to kind of get that together and just promote Family Day as a way, you know, even to get service providers out there that are focused on families and kids as a way to get them out and, you know, make that a real special day for folks. Couple of the other changes, potentially moving open class a little bit. We, we just feel like we're not utilizing the auditorium building quite as well as we could. It's our nice air conditioned building during a hot fair. It's got the commercial kitchen. There's just so many upsides to it. And, you know, sometimes with open class, it can be, it's very popular and people attended, but maybe we could utilize it better is definitely one. Expand upon the walking acts and kind of the arts and culture side of the fair. So we've done really successful with a couple civic theaters coming to do impromptu performances recently and did it last year, did it this year and people really liked that. It was really unique, really different. What other?
Yeah, I agree. I think adding more culture to our fair will be a huge hit. I also was talking about adjusting the hours of operation on Thursday too, just a little bit to, that way it's later opening maybe to, that way we're not so slow for the first four or five hours of our day. Really hone in on those walking acts more. I really want to see them around more. And I feel like they, any, any person that talked to me was like, oh, I saw him over here. And then we're like trying to find them, really getting our app up and running this year and using that as a schedule that you schedule your day out and you know exactly where to be when you need to be there.
And I think we can also do better with our sustainability efforts. I think that was something that this year we saw that we've probably had past years where we hit that mark a little higher. You know, so that's something we'd like to promote more. You know, we just found out that we received a grant for the drinking water stations out there, which will also be a real benefit, which is huge and really important for the folks at fair. We, as we found out on Thursday, when temperatures got high and we were trying to get folks to not come back out to the fair, it was getting so, so.
Let's see. Oh, you mentioned the moving the 4H auction to the afternoon and the weather was cooperative. I'm sure you've wondered, well, what would happen if? I'm sure you've wondered, well, what would happen if it was a 95 degree day instead of 80, 85? But that seems seems like it worked worked well and then you don't have some of your volunteers working till the wee hours. Totally not working their magic, but congratulations on breaking the million dollar mark for the auction. That's that's pretty impressive. And shows great community support and supporting the kids. As long as you have that photo up. I'm not easily impressed and Naomi impressed me with her communication skills and personality. And then I found out about the wild Mustang that she's worked with and and just an excellent spokesperson for the for the fair and for Benton County. So I would suggest having her kind of be perpetual queen or work that out.
I agree.
Make sure she has some, assuming she's still around next year, a role because she really is a rock star in communication area.
Agreed. Agreed. She really comes with a special skill set and she worked really hard for Benton County.
Oh, um, I know the fire marshal required you to have less camping spaces. What was the feedback result of that?
You know, it was initially, it was, you know, big disaster, you know, but I think we worked with the four H families and they found a way to make it work. And and so we got as many people in there as we could do safely and and just big thanks to Ray Wood Takewood Biddy to to help us out there, too. He was at the fair constantly with the fire marshal and really everybody's safety is is our primary concern. So, you know, and and we just so appreciate the four H families because you know, they heard the news that we were going to have to reduce the camping and they stepped up and they did what they needed to and and crammed people into tents and and did whatever they could. And so we're just so grateful because you know, we're all working together and trying to figure out a way to add as much as we could without taking too much of the fair footprint. And so, you know, we'll work on it again coming up this year to see if we can find an option for a touch more, but I think that they they were really, they did a great job working with us, Carolyn Ashton and the whole group. We just really appreciate them. So I think it was challenging, but it went okay. We were still able to put on the fair.
Yeah, I think I'll add that because we had, last year we had 79 RVs and this year they had 42. So it was a huge change, but they also had 32 tents last year and they had 97 this year. So people still want to come, they still want to camp. I think it made it more that camping vibe for those kids. I heard nothing but awesome things from the kids. You were like, this is so fun. And so I think, you know, the change we made was really dramatic, but it also was really good me coming in new. It was like everything was new for them. And so I think they really just adjusted to it really well. And I think if we can add more next year, it'd be great, but I don't even know if that will be necessary or if we'll be able to. So.
Great. And by kind of initial negative, that was several months ago. In theory, oh, you're changing things and this is terrible. And then people figured out how to, it sounds like figured out how to make it work.
I think so.
Yeah, and I don't even, there wasn't a lot of pushback when we first announced that there was going to be some changes. A lot of people were curious. But until we knew exactly what those changes were going to be, we kind of just kept it with a small group of us that needed to know what was going to happen. And then once we knew for sure, we went to a large animal meeting and we addressed it and we didn't get a ton of pushback. We had a lot of people who had ideas and suggestions and we took all of those to consideration. We had the fire marshal multiple times to look at these areas to see if we could add in other spaces. Ultimately, our goal was to keep all the kids safe and in an area where they were all together. So it wasn't sprinkle here, there and everywhere throughout the fair. So I think it worked out really well.
Well, and just congratulations on pronouncing Ray's last name.
Thank you.
I don't even.
And glad that, I mean, he's, he was new also, but brought a ton of experience from Lane County. Welcome addition to the team.
Agreed.
Thank you. I wasn't able to make it to the fair this year. I was out of town, but it sounds like it went really well. And I'm looking forward to next year. I love the idea of ever increasing the integration between the four H families and the traditional fair community rodeo with more of the cultural elements from the community. Because it's, we're so rich here and it'd be nice to showcase some of what the rest of the community has to offer as well. So I look forward to seeing how things evolve.
And you have some sort of award for Naomi or make up an award for her?
Maybe something, absolutely.
I told her to start training the new cleanup now.
Yeah.
Lots of meetings planned.
Yep, that sounds great. Well, thank you. I really appreciate the upbeat upbeat update. It's really lovely and always things to do better. But that just means we'll have more fun next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the facilities update with Paul Walsinger from Public Works.
Good morning. I guess I'll just start by saying when Gary asked me to cover for this week, he might have forgot to tell me that we had this facilities update today. So I'm going to be fairly brief. I'm going to start with the the new Benton County Courthouse. Made a lot of progress in in the courthouse. Everybody understands there's a, been a couple of obstacles to our land use permit. Those look like they're finally starting to resolve. So the historic Swick House, Gary's done a miraculous job working with that group. There's a lot of players on that field. There's a lot of differing opinions on how that should work. And I think they're finally coming to a consensus and we're expecting that agreement soon. That's going to be a huge hurdle. The next one is just simply getting a plat or the property recorded properly. And those, I think that's the last two hurdles we have with the new Benton County Courthouse and the getting the land use permit through the city of Corvallis to finally get this underway. You know, sort of the downside of that is we're going to clear these hurdles just in time for the rainy season. So that again, will probably be a little bit of a delay. But the construction teams and contract management teams are making plans right now to try and mitigate as much of that as humanly possible. The Emergency Operations Center. DD is done. So developmental design is done, it's completed, it's been accepted by the users and we're starting into construction documents for that facility now. And then with those two, even though it seems like there's not a lot going on, there's still grass in the field, you know, there's no bulldozers or anything. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes and especially in the submittal field. As they spend the time to work on the details, what the doorknobs look like and, you know, where all the paper towel holders go and and, you know, all of those details are being worked through right now, which will help to expedite the process kind of on the backside. Next is the Crisis Center. I think everybody sees it is finally coming out of the ground. We have, we have two by, two by fours sticking up down there and we are super happy about that. As of Friday, they were finishing the decking on the first floor. We're waiting for two main structural wood beams to come in. They should be here today. Everybody cross your fingers and they'll be, they will begin framing on the second floor, which is really going to give the public the view of what this building will look like in the long run. And so right now, the next major goal or major hurdle with this building is to try and get it roofed and mostly dry it in before the rainy season comes. And we're on track to get that, that, make that happen. And that's it for basic updates for the, at least for the three big projects we have going on. If you have any questions, I'm trying to stay brief today.
With respect to the Monroe Clinic, are we still in the NEPA review, NEPA shippo or further along than that?
The NEPA review is in, we should have final results on that shortly. We have, I, I did a bunch of work with the staff. We have did a lot of the pre-programming for the building up front. So we know what they want, make sure it fits inside of the square footage that they need. So we're sort of in the starting blocks, waiting for the gun to go off.
Okay. That's exciting, too. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, Paul, on the courthouse. Is there a timetable for groundbreaking? I mean, you mentioned rainy season and is that possible? We would have some activity out there this month or is it October?
Well, without casting, you know, false hope, I think right now the plan is sometime near the end of September or going into the first week of October. But there's still a lot of variables.
Sure. But but there's fewer variables now than there were
There are.
a few weeks ago. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a review of a proposed resource naming policy and the lead on this is Rachel McAnaney County Administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. You had requested an updated resource naming policy. So the existing policy is in your packet is overly vague and provides no formal procedure or process to identify names. This proposed policy positively addresses those shortcomings. And I wanted to let you know that the Policy Oversight Committee has not yet seen this version due to the holiday, but they meet later this week. So your feedback will help guide their review and process. So the intent of the proposed, the proposed update is to ensure that the Board of Commissioners guides the naming process and expedites timing while still capturing necessary input, feedback and perspectives from our staff and our community. So the proposed procedure for naming facilities or lands is the following. You, the commissioners, will instruct me as the county administrator to beginning the naming process. Included in the directive will be your thoughts and direction of possible themes or specific people or groups. So for example, you may want the newly purchased children and family services building to identify a champion or a group in the community that supported health or family related policies or activities. Two, then I will identify a facilitator to direct the naming process. With your guidance, the facilitator will reach out to a relevant, to the relevant staff, programs and committees that are relevant to your wishes. Names will be identified and vetted by the Equity Committee, Historic Resources Commission and others to ensure a very robust examination of names. Facilitator will also reach out to relevant and important community members and groups to capture their views and recommendations. In addition, our PIO staff will conduct a community awareness and outreach campaign. So after the vetting process, I will come back to you with three to five names. I hope it's not five, that's an awful lot, but for your review and approval of one, or just you will ask to find me additional names for your consideration. With that, we are looking for your thoughts and feedback of this proposed updated policy. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the revised process and policy. I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't have any significant comments on the substance of the policy and procedure. But I turn to my fellow commissioners to see whether they do.
I appreciate the effort that's gone into this and appreciate getting a clearer process for naming facilities and sites. So, but I don't think I had any specific additions or corrections to what's proposed, but I, I think it's it's much better than what we had previously and me seems like will be much better, clearer procedure to go forward with.
Yeah, I agree. It's less vague, yet there's still room for flexibility. And I would just say, this is the first time we've had it at a meeting. I'm open to hearing if there's any community members or groups or organizations that have an opinion about it. I would encourage them to reach out and talk to us.
We did have some involvement from, from community members, I'm correct?
Oh, yeah, certainly. And then we also looked at several different counties naming policy. And I really want to give a shout out to our small policy team that exists in the Board of Commissioners to, to really did a deep dive and research and spoke to a lot of folks. It was also brought up to the, with Ryan Voight at the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments and a lot of different groups. So we got some good feedback. We also looked at our fellow city managers, so they could be thinking about this as well. It's also vague enough that, you know, we're not into naming every park bench. Because, you know, along the lines, we do get some community members who come and want to memorialize their favorite path and hike and we still want them to be able to be very much part of of the community.
Yes, just considering some unexpected issues with our last policy, I just feel inclined to say that of course, I'm, I'm open to hearing more feedback if there is any.
Okay, so with there's no meeting motion now. We're not, this is not an approval, but it's just a check in. So point well taken commissioner wise. If there is more feedback, we'd welcome it. But at this point, I agree, it provides both structure and flexibility and I appreciate the considerations that are listed in the naming book for sources and in the naming process. And it makes clear that the Board of Commissioners does have final ultimate say. So go forward. Okay, next up we have an hour before our public hearing. So we will be shifting over to new business. And the item 7.1 is approval to apply for new access point funding from the Health Resources and Services Administration, otherwise known as HERSA. Lacey Muller and Christine Mosba from our community health centers.
Good morning. As we were preparing for this, we, we couldn't believe we hadn't already asked for permission because we have been talking to you about this so many times. We didn't realize we hadn't gone through that step yet. So we are very happy to be here. I can download it really quick or I can join really fast and. Oh, you need it as a PDF? Oh, okay. Sorry, my apologies. Okay. Technical difficulties are. Oh, yeah, our first slide has to have transitions in it, apparently. Oh, sure. Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right. Well, okay. Yeah, I mean, so this is our, our cover slide here that for a request for approval for us to apply for the new access point funding that HERSA has made available. The purpose of the new access point funding is really to support new health center service delivery sites in order to expand this primary care affordable network of health centers for underserved communities. And this one is really targeting the high-needs geographic areas and medically underserved and low-income uninsured areas. So quite, they have a pretty specific focus this time, which is different than what it has been in the past. There are three additional funding priority areas. So in terms of how they're scoring the health, the new access point application. So one is a high-needs area. This is what will score you the highest. They're really looking for an unmet needs score of 75 or higher. They would really, so the closer you are to 75 is where you get that, those bonus points. The health center program has to also penetrate the low-income population of at least 5% or more. And they can't be any current health center service delivery sites in the, in the area that you're looking at. They're also looking at sparsely populated areas that are at Level 3 and Level 4 in Frontier in remote areas. And in terms of where that looks like on the national HERSA map is really looking into the Frontier regions and in our, in Alaska, Montana, some Eastern Washington, a little bit of Eastern Oregon, and then down in Arizona, New Mexico, that area still. And then the third extra point area is for look-alike health centers. So for site requirements, you have to be able to provide full-time services, which they categorizes 40 hours a week. It has to be a fixed site. You have to have year-round operation. And you have to include mental health and substance use disorder services as a part of your primary services that you're delivering, which is different than historical new access point applications, which only require primary care services. And then the performance period starts in next June. And they'll evaluate after a year and decide whether or not they're going to add that additional $650,000 onto your existing grant or not. So also in the past, they have just added it on regardless. So this is a little bit different. In terms of how these awards, they're awarding 77 expected awards at this point. 62 of those will go to community health centers, which is where we are at in terms of what we're applying for. Six migrant health centers and then six healthcare for the homeless spaces. And then one public health, housing, health center award will be granted. So in terms of, this is Jim McRae, Mick Cray, our Associate Administrator for the Bureau of Primary Care Services at HERSA. And he is cautiously encouraging all of us to be aware that the funding is highly competitive. As you can see, currently in the nation, there's 100 registered look-alike community health centers. So keep in mind, there's only 66 awards and there's 100 look-alikes. And there are two currently in Oregon. The last opportunity for the new access point was in 2019, which we didn't apply for. And they're kind of different than what they have historically done. They're just encouraging everyone to apply, regardless of whether or not you feel like you have the most competitive application. And of course, another key element here is that funding for this is for fiscal year 2025, which hasn't been approved yet. So we're hopeful, you know, when this was posted, things looked very different on the political landscape than it does today. So who knows? We'll see. So we want to talk a little bit about that unmet need score because we've emphasized that that's a big part of how HERSA will be looking at this. The information on this slide really just tells you how they calculate, use, and describe that. So I won't say too much about it, other than it is pulling from a lot of locally and publicly available sources to try and come up with a really clear picture on a federal level, which is hard to do, of where need is and particularly need as it relates to what a community health center could impact. It's okay. And so some of the pieces that are included in here, again, this is the formula that they provide to hopefully help you understand how they're getting to these numbers. And we'll share some of the specifics in a second. But the big piece to keep in mind is it's a combination of health determinants and health status. So they have some direct and they have some proxy measures and all of those pieces come together. They've really updated the mapping and the methodology this year, and they're really trying to do as much as they can to have something that's slightly objective, help to identify where these investments, when they're limited, may go to make the biggest impact. So a lot of different pieces up there about community characteristics, and all of those have been taken into account. And so our unmet need that we're looking at is application in the Albany area and not Albany in general, but Albany. This is from a HERSA map. So the east side of Albany, which is kind of on that side of I-5 that you see up there and going towards Tangent and Lebanon is the zip code block. They call that ZICTA, Z-C-T-A. And so they've grouped a bunch of elements and zip codes together to identify that this area has an unmet need score of 60.75. And if you notice, that's double what the other side of Albany is at 32. Some of our areas not only already have health center penetration, so we're not eligible, but they are sitting in the 15 to 20 unmet need score. So we feel good about the work we've done there and we notice and we know from conversation that Albany has a higher unmet need, a large population of IHN recipients for Medicaid as well. The other piece that we are looking at in terms of Albany is the impact. So Lynn County Public Health has been talking to us for years as a partner because we do provide services across both counties. Really looking at when we might be able to differently or better support some of the primary care access that they have. And so we have a lot of resource through their GIS at the county level and through their health department and their public health teams to really talk to us about what it looks like. And, you know, the, the areas that they anecdotally and geographically and with their data support are also what is showing up at the federal level. So we have a good place to start from and talking with Albany about this. But it's not just about Albany. This is certainly where we have the opportunity to apply. It's really about better care for all of our patients. We have the specific numbers in a few slides, but about 20% of our community health centers of Benton and Lynn Counties patients are coming already from the Albany area. So that may mean that they work, live, or play, you know, in multiple places. But it also means that many of them are driving to us or they have followed a provider from one clinic to another. So we do have a good number of people who are already in our services, who are coming from the greater Albany area. So that's inclusive of those two, East, West Albany and Tangent. That's kind of what gets lumped into there. And that this would be an opportunity to provide some new opportunities for people who can't travel or get to us or follow their provider who are in Albany or just new patients in general who don't know about us, but who would really benefit from our model of care. And that's what the partners that we have been talking to and will continue to talk to really emphasize. So this is absolutely a boost for one location, but it is also with our whole system and benefits for the whole system in mind. And then this is that breakdown of our current patients, where they go. So they are at all of our clinics from Sweet Home to Monroe. They're traveling that far. It's about 1,500 people. And you can kind of see where they, they are across the different sites. Of course, the Corvallis location, the Benton Health Center on 27th is where we see most of them. But we're also seeing a good portion of folks who are in South Corvallis at the Lincoln Health Center. So we're excited about the idea of what it could look like to provide a different access point and maybe even open up some spaces in those Corvallis locations for people who are waiting to get into their primary care, dental care, behavioral health services. So one of the requirements on the application is that we have a permanent site address on, on our application, which the initial part was initially was supposed to be due in the beginning parts of, of August. And then they pushed that deadline. But we spent quite a bit of time initially having conversations with partners in Albany, trying to find space, physical space. We met with folks from the Samaritan Hospital System, from IHN, from Chance, the, and Family Tree Relief Nursery. Pardon? Lynn County Public Health and the, that, what's that? Family Roots. Yeah, Young Roots. Yeah, yeah. And Family Tree Relief Nursery was really excited to have conversation with us about potentially co-locating services with them. They have the space, which we'll kind of show you some pictures of. But we've been really fortunate to be doing quite a bit of work with them with the deflection program and really have enjoyed their leadership and enthusiasm as they're really invested in tackling all things substance use related issues in Benton and Lynn Counties. But they have some space in Albany. So they have a lot of, they are really particularly excited about the idea of being able to provide care, you know, from birth till death, which is our, you know, catch area also. And be able to really close the gap on some needed services. So they have some, they're located in a building that is just next to the Boys and Girls Club on Hill and, which is an old church that is actually owned by the Boys and Girls Club. And they have a long-term lease in there. And so there's some office space that's available. And then they have this big sanctuary that they said that they really imagine as the square footage that could be repurposed into a primary care clinic. The, the award of $650,000 up to $250,000 can go into renovations and building changes and that sort of thing. So there is some funding available for that. We do, we did get a reply from HERSA letting us know that after, at some point after the application is submitted, if a different space were to become available to provide services, you could apply for a change in scope and then update your address that way. So there, that we're not locked in here, but certainly they were willing to dream and imagine with us about what care delivery could look like. And then these are just some of the ongoing conversations that we've been having with leadership at all of these different partners and others that are not listed on here. But we've really enjoyed being able to keep building on this conversation about collaboration and serving the greater Albany area. Then our regional health assessment, we had pulled this together because we needed our board, the CHC board's approval. And it's always helpful just to give them some context for how Benton and Lynn Counties really interact. And so this talks a little bit about the mix of the percentage of people. So it's about a third of, of the tri-county is folks from Benton County who are having, you know, half of the resources in primary care. And then you sort of flip that number for Lynn County and then identifying that both Lynn and Lincoln are underserved compared to the state. And so I think we found that a lot with our partners who have just said that, you know, everybody probably needs more primary care. And we definitely feel like the numbers bear that out for us. So we want to be respectful of our regional needs and know that a lot of our regional work happens across county lines. It certainly doesn't our work. So we're well oriented to those impacts, but the numbers bear that out, too. And I think our board felt good ultimately about supporting a proposal that would help with this sort of regionally identified need and shortfall as compared to the rest of the state. So what we have written for our initial abstract to HERSA is to propose, you know, one, primary care provider FTE. Two, FTEs for mental health providers, including a QMHP and a CADC. And then we're, you know, guessing around five support staff, which could be, you know, anything from nursing to our population health coordinators and medical assistants. We, we would hope that, you know, that we could grow as we advance if we are awarded. And really seeing the, the Albany center as being able to have a maximum capacity of about 3,000 patients. And so really, you know, the idea is for us to focus on, you know, unavoidable emergency department visits, increasing primary care utilization and thereby all of those screening metrics and chronic disease prevention, behavioral health access. And then really seeing if we can have an impact on the community there. So that is the gist of what we are asking for. I think we need from you all, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. But we need a motion to approve an application.
Thank you. It's exciting. There's a lot going on in this proposal, and it's anything but certain, as you say. Personally, I think it is well worth applying and honoring all of the collaboration you all have had putting this concept together. It does clearly address a need and would take pressure off of some of our existing clinics. Fiscal question, would it operate the same way as Sweet Home and Lebanon do in terms of the finances being separate from Benton County?
Yeah, it would, it would live under that Fund 522 side of things and be separate operationally.
Mm-hmm. I think that that's always a concern for folks in Benton County is that there would be no general fund dollars that would go to the clinic. But it would be served by the community health centers of Benton and Lynn Counties. Yeah. Any other questions for Christine and Lacey?
Not questions necessarily, but I did just kind of want to piggyback off of what Commissioner Ogero said. I think this is one of those areas where it can be very confusing for the public. And we have people saying, well, I live in Benton County and I pay property taxes and are my property tax dollars going to Albany? So could you, I guess, speak to that a little more directly?
Yeah, sure. So we are, we have two separate funds in the community health centers. One is, has all of our Benton County clinics and the other one has our has all of our Benton County clinics and the other one has our two Lynn County clinics. And so they really operate on a different type of budget. They also have supplemental revenue through expansion and new access point grants, which is how we opened both the Eastland Health Center and the Sweet Home Health Center. So they have additional grant dollars that we don't necessarily have in Benton County. And as well, I mean, at the end of the day, they, we all, I mean, Rick's sitting back there, I'm not, I can't see him like winking at me if I'm saying the right thing or not, but he'll correct me if I'm wrong. But at the end of the day, we we wind up with, we operate a little bit at a surplus in our Lynn County clinics. They're a little bit leaner in terms of our total overall operations and the fact that we reside in our spaces mostly based off of, you know, kind of in-kind donations or low rent spaces, it kind of creates a lot lower cost, just in terms of service delivery. So any remaining revenue or surplus gets transferred in to cover the cost of our Benton County Health Center clinics.
So another question. So if I, you know, if I'm someone who's saying, well, you know, I live in Benton County and Benton County should be putting all their efforts into Benton County, and why are we putting efforts to help, you know, part of Albany that's not in Benton County? I mean, I understand here that it will help take the pressure off of our other clinics, including ones in Benton County. Any any other arguments for that?
I mean, I would just point to the fact that this is a long-term standing relationship. It's not something new that we're trying to do. So 10 years ago plus, Lynn County had said we aren't in a place to open a federally qualified health center. There's a lot of requirements to do that, but we know that there's a huge need. And it feels like if you all are going to, you know, continue this lift in Benton County, we may have an opportunity for partnerships. So this was something that was entered into with, you know, agreement and with parameters around it. It's been in place for quite a long time. So it feels like, conceptually, anecdotally, a model that has been working just fine. And certainly those questions and concerns are valid ones, but I think we have many years of experience to share that it works well. I won't speak to the financial side because that's not my area of expertise, but it's very doable and it's really beneficial. I think what you all may know in your personal lives or just from hearing from community partners, our Lynn Benton Lincoln region operates a lot of things quite regionally, and there is a ton of back and forth because of jobs and cost of housing between Benton and Lynn Counties. So it's quite acceptable, I think, in so many of our service spaces to really have this mixed model of multiple county services. And we see a lot of our partners growing, not just to do like a Lynn Benton, which is geographically convenient, but also looping in Lincoln County. And so I think I think it feels nice to be on that same path as we have for, you know, 12 years to say that we do things regionally because we know that people's lives are connected in jobs and housing.
Thank you.
I appreciate the explanation of the fiscal, how it fits in. And you probably couldn't see, but when you were talking about Lynn County operating at a slight surplus, Debbie was nodding her head in the back.
Oh, she's back. I didn't see you, Debbie.
Apparently, you're okay with the financial people. Would you go over the timetable? So the application is due at the end of the month?
It's due on September the 30th. We, they have put on the no-fo that they will notify folks around or after June 1st. So in that first performance period, you have about 120 days to be operational, become operational. So it'd be a pretty quick lift to get, you know, staffing and services up and going. Now, they have, HERSA has let us know there would be a no cost extension available to kind of extend that out 18 months. So you can really look at the performance period over the course of an actual 12 months. But once the application is submitted in September, we don't expect we'll hear anything until June the 1st, with the exception of the possibility, if HERSA is able to advocate for some additional dollars and expand the number of grants, that's a possibility that I think HERSA is really crossing their fingers and toes that that might be a possibility.
And I think you at least partially answered. So into this month, put in the application and then a real quick turnaround of nine months.
Yeah.
Before you you hear anything, but you're supposed to have a location identified.
Yes. So what we'll be doing in the meantime is working on agreements, job descriptions, kind of a business model to put together. Unfortunately, that would require another policy package for the budget, all of those things that will have to come together really quickly. So if we are awarded, we'll have all of that ready to go. It won't be starting from scratch on our processes. So that way we can really get to posting positions and working on getting, you know, all of the potential updates to any space that we have that we're going into. We have a meeting here in the next couple of weeks, I think, with the Albany City Council, if this was approved, to have a conversation with them. Also, Mayor Johnson really wanted us to, you know, bring up the issue of space again and see if there's any other spaces available in the zip code area that we need that perhaps could pop up for us as well. So that that opportunity still exists, but for now, we're really excited that we found a partner that wants to at least allow us to apply under their address. So.
Okay. My initial concern was having that space empty, empty till you, till next June.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
But you have some flexibility if you can find other space and the Relief Nursery is willing to wait for you folks to fulfill the space.
They have a tenant right now. And so there is a church that's using that space, but they don't plan to continue that relationship forever. And so when we talked with the executive director, the timing actually seems pretty ideal for what we'd be looking at and what they currently have going on. So we had to address that.
Great.
And they also use that space for group meetings and a lot of other things currently, just as it exists currently. So they they're not in any quick shape to be changing that up. And it's it's an investment financially that, you know, nonprofits don't usually have a lot of money laying around for that.
Thank you.
Quick question, process wise, does the CHC Board need to give approval to apply as well?
They did at their August meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. And could you remind me what a lookalike clinic is?
Oh, yeah. A lookalike clinic is basically a health center that has gone through all the steps to become compliant with HERSA to be a community health center, but has not received the federal designation or award. So they're functioning as a community health center without any of the financial incentives to be one. So you can do that for a while, but not for forever, because particularly in non-Medicaid expansion states, I know that they're really looking for funding. So.
Based on our experience, I think it would be very difficult to operate a like without that federal subsidy. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? I'm ready for a motion.
Well, I'll preface the motion to checking through the core values. This project checks all the boxes. So I will move to approve the submission of the Health Resource Access Point, New Access Point Funding Grant Application.
Second. Okay, noting that HERSA is Health Resources Service Administration. Yes. I will call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate with an aye. 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 Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we will, do we have time for an executive session now? I don't know how long it might be. Okay. We, next up, we will take a five-minute break. We will resume our meeting with item 7.2, Approval of Updated Social Media Policy, A114. Rachel McEnany presenting.
Well, there's no I in team. I want to bring up my PIO team here, John Avi Stokes as well, who worked, shepherded this policy through. There are two changes really that we want to highlight in the new version of the social media policy. One is, is we have more updated language, like Twitter is now X. Nextdoor is a very robust social media platform used in this area. And as well as we wanted to follow some First Amendment rights where we had to strike the word profanity, because that is a First Amendment right. And I was going to just hand it over to my colleague here to add any other social media issues or the thing was brought up in the policy that we didn't take on, that when we were looking at other social media policies that we would like to open for discussion and then for approval from our from our commissioners.
One more time. There you go. Red is on. Okay, gotcha. Good morning, Commissioners, Council, and County Administration. Rachel McEnany.
And you do need to put it close to you, John Avi, because otherwise it doesn't pick up very well.
Oh, got me. Okay. So just a quick update, like Rachel said, adding a little bit more, going back about two springs ago, I attended the Government Social Media Conference. And there we discovered that we were not in line with our First Amendment rights. So we updated our policy. I spoke with Vance. We took that information to our social media work group. From there, we struck the term, like Rachel mentioned, remove profanity. So that's a right that people can use. Our social media work group were fine with all of our changes. And again, this was in 22, spring of 22. Yeah. Then it was taken to our policy oversight committee and our law enforcement department and the DA's office wanted an exception put in there. So we added that exception. It was approved by the policy oversight committee. The DA's office and law enforcement were fine with that. And so we presented that to our employees. They had some comments. We incorporated some of them and did not incorporate others. So pretty much just those two major things, the word profanity removed and the law enforcement exclusion.
So with that, what's open to comments or questions?
Well, I do have a couple of questions. One very quick comment, and that is that on the bottom of page three of the policy or page 84 of the packet, there's some added language. Therefore, its its social media presence primarily will be in the form of opt-in, follow, like, et cetera pages, where the county does not choose whom followers of the social media channel. whom followers of the social media channel. whom followers of the social media channel. The gram, I don't understand The gram, I don't understand what that's trying to say. what that's trying to say. The grammar is weird at the end of the sentence. The grammar is weird at the end of the sentence. So, just to highlight that, So, just to highlight that, it might need a little bit of cleanup. it might need a little bit of cleanup. But the bigger question is, But the bigger question is, with respect to the Sheriff's Office with respect to the Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office, respecting that those are both elected officials respecting that those are both elected officials and they have their own policies and they have their own policies in many areas, in many areas, do we have any role do we have any role in ensuring that they also in ensuring that they also are paying attention to best practices are paying attention to best practices and to First Amendment rights? and to First Amendment rights? Do you coordinate policies with those two entities? Do you coordinate policies with those two entities?
No.
No.
They both have, well, not all of them,
They both have, well, not all of them,
but most of our departments
but most of our departments
that have social media account,
that have social media account,
their staff attend
their staff attend
our quarterly social media work group.
our quarterly social media work group.
That's where we learn about new updates,
That's where we learn about new updates,
things that are going on, best practices, et cetera.
things that are going on, best practices, et cetera.
We don't have anyone
We don't have anyone
from the DA's office
from the DA's office
and part of that group right now.
and part of that group right now.
We do have law enforcement.
We do have law enforcement.
But we do not, I don't have access
But we do not, I don't have access
to those policies.
to those policies.
This is the county-wide one.
This is the county-wide one.
As you said, they're both elected officials
As you said, they're both elected officials
and have their own.
and have their own.
I'm not privy to those policies.
I'm not privy to those policies.
So, unless Vance knows something
So, unless Vance knows something
that would like to add.
that he would like to add.
I looked at the Sheriff's Office I looked at the Sheriff's Office's policy policy about 2022, about 2022, and it was close to the county policy, and it was close to the county policy, but I haven't looked at it since. but I haven't looked at it since. And I've never seen the DA's. And I've never seen the DA's. I'm not sure they have separate ones. I'm not sure they have separate ones.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I would just be interested Yeah, I would just be interested to know whether or not to know whether or not they do cover all the bases. they do cover all the bases. Because, yes, they are elected officials, Because, yes, they are elected officials, but all of their employees but all of their employees are also county employees. are also county employees. And it makes me a little bit uncomfortable And it makes me a little bit uncomfortable that we have significant entities that we have significant entities that are not in coordination that are not in coordination with our overall policy. with our overall policy.
And I would just, I would mention And I would just, I would mention that I frequently see that I frequently see the Sheriff's Office's social media posts. the Sheriff's Office's social media posts. And I've never seen anything And I've never seen anything that seemed questionable or, you know, that seemed questionable or, you know, but that's not to say but that's not to say that it couldn't happen in the future. that it couldn't happen in the future. And yeah, for consistency, And yeah, for consistency, I mean, I can see how it'd be good I mean, I can see how it'd be good to have things line up. to have things line up.
I know that one of the other issues I know that one of the other issues with the Sheriff's Office with the Sheriff's Office has been the long-term storage has been the long-term storage of social media of social media as part of the county record, official record. as part of the county record, official record. So, yeah, I think there are, there are issues. So, yeah, I think there are, there are issues. And I just want to make sure And I just want to make sure that we don't set up a situation that we don't set up a situation where we have some liability, where we have some liability, because we are not covering all the bases. because we are not covering all the bases.
I was just going to comment
I was just going to comment
that they do have people
that they do have people
that are attending the work group.
that are attending the work group.
They're staying up on best practices.
They're staying up on best practices.
They're following, as far as I can tell,
They're following, as far as I can tell,
our policy or their own,
our policy or their own,
even though I haven't seen that.
even though I haven't seen that.
And as far as the records archiving,
And as far as the records archiving,
the Board of Commissioners's office
the Board of Commissioners's office
does pay for the entire county,
does pay for the entire county,
including the Sheriff's Department.
including the Sheriff's Department.
And they have, I think, eight to 10 accounts.
And they have, I think, eight to 10 accounts.
So, that's a cost that we pick up every two years.
So, that's a cost that we pick up every two years.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
All of our accounts are protected.
All of our accounts are protected.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. John Avi, can you give some examples, though, John Avi, can you give some examples, though, when you do work with law enforcement, when you do work with law enforcement, occasionally when things happen, occasionally when things happen, like a massive car accident like a massive car accident or some examples with emergency management, or some examples with emergency management, where you guys work more collaboratively? where you guys work more collaboratively?
Well, during the emergency situations, Well, during the emergency situations, our office doesn't really get involved our office doesn't really get involved unless it's, you know, like, unless it's, you know, like, a wildfire event. a wildfire event. When the Board of Commissioners When the Board of Commissioners declares an emergency, declares an emergency, then we take over then we take over or join in the Emergency Operations Center or join in the Emergency Operations Center and help with that messaging. and help with that messaging. But if they ask us, like our Health Department But if they ask us, like our Health Department behind, behind, well, they're over here, well, they're over here, our Health Department, law enforcement, our Health Department, law enforcement, and community partners and community partners do work on campaigns together, do work on campaigns together, like, for example, wildfire prevention. like, for example, wildfire prevention. We hit that hard early in the spring, We hit that hard early in the spring, summer, late fall. summer, late fall. We work with ODF. We work with ODF. We work with law enforcement We work with law enforcement with our Health Department. with our Health Department. So, we help amplify each other's messages. So, we help amplify each other's messages. Is that what you were kind of asking about, Rachel? Is that what you were kind of asking about, Rachel?
It's more about the syncing of messages. It's more about the syncing of messages. I mean, I know the concern, I mean, I know the concern, especially with law enforcement, especially with law enforcement, if it's an ongoing investigation, if it's an ongoing investigation, that they really, it's not appropriate that they really, it's not appropriate for our PIO office for our PIO office to share that type of information, to share that type of information, whether it's an active investigation whether it's an active investigation or, you know, they want it coming from one source. or, you know, they want it coming from one source. But on other occasions, you know, But on other occasions, you know, and I use the example of, unfortunately, and I use the example of, unfortunately, some, you know, horrific car accidents, some, you know, horrific car accidents, we do try to help we do try to help retweet, whatever the right word is, retweet, whatever the right word is, to get the information out. to get the information out. If, you know, folks like Route 20 is closed If, you know, folks like Route 20 is closed and trying to work in those type of, and trying to work in those type of, they do give you a heads-up on that. they do give you a heads-up on that.
Not normally. Not normally. But if I see it and catch it, I try to share it. But if I see it and catch it, I try to share it. But if they do reach out, I absolutely share it. But if they do reach out, I absolutely share it. So, we get the message spread a lot farther. So, we get the message spread a lot farther. Yep. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Commissioner Ojo, So, Commissioner Ojo, would you rather sort of put a pin in this would you rather sort of put a pin in this until we could talk to the sheriff until we could talk to the sheriff and his PIO or no? and his PIO or no?
Okay. Okay. I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it. I respect the offices that they hold I respect the offices that they hold and the oversight of their staff. and the oversight of their staff. But I just want to make sure But I just want to make sure that, from Council's office, that, from Council's office, where we are, you know, in accord where we are, you know, in accord that we have recovered for liability purposes that we have recovered for liability purposes and that I'm happy to hear and that I'm happy to hear that staff from the Sheriff's Office that staff from the Sheriff's Office participate in the regular meetings participate in the regular meetings of the social media cohort. of the social media cohort. That's good. That's good.
So, I think the only area So, I think the only area where there was a bit of a difference of opinion, where there was a bit of a difference of opinion, not what could be posted by the Sheriff's Office. not what could be posted by the Sheriff's Office. They are in alignment. They are in alignment. It's the Sheriff's Office wished It's the Sheriff's Office wished to be able to block to be able to block or to remove followers, or to remove followers, folks who commented profanely, folks who commented profanely, negatively criticized sheriff's staff. negatively criticized sheriff's staff. And that's, that was where And that's, that was where there was some pushback there was some pushback from the Sheriff's Office. from the Sheriff's Office. Their stance is that as law enforcement, There are stances that as law enforcement, they're entrusted with maintaining public trust they're entrusted with maintaining public trust and presenting credible, lawful, and presenting credible, lawful, trustworthy deputies and services. trustworthy deputies and services. And they wanted the ability And they wanted the ability to block or remove comments to block or remove comments that were not in keeping with that mission. that were not in keeping with that mission. And as I recall, we didn't, And as I recall, we didn't, they don't block anybody they don't block anybody as much as they will remove a comment as much as they will remove a comment or hide it, I guess, is the way to do it. or hide it, I guess, is the way to do it. Hide, and they hide that comment. Hide, and they hide that comment. So, that's, that was really So, that's, that was really the only point of divergence. the only point of divergence. Yes, early on, as you mentioned, Yes, early on, as you mentioned, it was the storage issue. it was the storage issue. But now that has been resolved. But now that has been resolved. So, I think it's just So, I think it's just a philosophical difference on that one point. a philosophical difference on that one point. What do you do if somebody What do you do if somebody is really going to be attacking a deputy is really going to be attacking a deputy or misrepresenting an incident? or misrepresenting an incident?
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification. I have no further questions I have no further questions other than that one sentence other than that one sentence that needs to be straightened out. that needs to be straightened out. But any other questions or comments But any other questions or comments for John Avi, other discussion? for John Avi, other discussion?
Just a comment. Just a comment. I appreciate the effort I appreciate the effort to coordinate our communication efforts to coordinate our communication efforts with separate departments with separate departments and hope that the and hope that the regular meetings of the people regular meetings of the people that are involved in social media, that are involved in social media, that that continues that that continues and make sure that we are speaking with one voice. and make sure that we are speaking with one voice. There is lots of chatter out there, There is lots of chatter out there, and I think it's critical and I think it's critical for us to have a consistent, for us to have a consistent, coordinated message. coordinated message. And with that commentary, And with that commentary, I will move to approve updates I will move to approve updates to the Benton County A114 to the Benton County A114 Social Media Policy. Social Media Policy.
Second. Second. All in favor, signify with an aye. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you. Aye, thank you. Thank you, John Avi. Thank you, John Avi.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay. Okay. We will now take a break until 11:00 a.m., We will now take a break until 11:00 a.m., when we will come back with our public hearing. when we will come back with our public hearing.
Six minutes. Six minutes.
Continue our board meeting with the public hearing, and Laurel Byer presenting regarding initiation of proceedings to transfer jurisdiction of a county road to the city of Albany.
Good morning, Commissioners, Rachel, Vance. Yes, I'm here to do the formal process to initiate transfer of Gibson Hill Road to the city of Albany. And they are very willing, because we did manage to put together the improvements, which included some sidewalks and curb and gutter and drainage, and a full overlay. So, like, I'm gonna set off the microphone. And then also, there is a piece of property in North Albany that the city would also like, that Benton County owns. It's at the corner of North Albany Road and Gibson Hill. And it was probably acquired at one point either for road improvement purposes, or for the North Albany Sewer District, because there's a pump station that's just south of there. And so, the city of Albany would like that piece of property. And so, we see that that's actually probably a good option for them, because that's actually how they access the sewer pump station, the lift station. And so, it, the county has no need for it, especially since North Albany Road and Gibson Hill Road are now city streets. And so, we will be bringing that to you probably in October for you to look at. But are there any questions about Gibson Hill?
No, not at this time.
Are there other county roads in North Albany that, in the future, will get this kind of treatment?
So, Gibson Hill Road is the last of the short-term improvements that we had agreed to do within our intergovernmental agreement. There are some long-term transfers that may happen, but it's going to be kind of in conjunction with development instead. So, like, there's pieces of Crocker Lane that could go to the city. There's Valley View, Scenic, Quarry. There's several other roads that are still county jurisdiction that will, over the long term, be transferred to the city of Albany. But nothing, nothing, there's no other short-term projects that we agreed to.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify before the Board of Commissioners at this time? Anyone online? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will call for a motion.
I move to approve order number 2024-D051 to transfer jurisdiction of Northwest Gibson Hill Road, County Road Number 04910, to the city of Albany, Oregon.
Second. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we will now leave our regular session and enter into an executive session under ORS 192.640. Vance, I need the...